For the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes or revisions to the regular or consent agendas? You have a motion?
I move to approve the regular.
I made the motion to approve the regular and consent agendas. Ali seconded. All those in favor? Recognitions and information. JAG programs, Gardner and Chris Proctor.
I'm gonna let Mr. Proctor do the talking tonight, so it's a new program we have at South Putnam. We're very excited about how it helps our kids have a positive memorable experience while they're in high school and also be prepared for their next steps.
I'm just gonna hand you each one of these, reference on the back end. Try to be brief. JAG, I got the opportunity from Tana as I was around the building last spring to, for us to bring JAG back to South Putnam High School. It's a very prominent program here in the county. North Putnam has two classrooms worth of JAG. Greencastle and Cloverdale both have very successful JAG programs. So I've been pretty excited to be a part of this and bring JAG back to South Putnam High School. I was, will admit, the first semester I was in the deep end of the pool. First time taking over a classroom like that. But just want to give a kind of a brief synopsis of what we've done to this point and where we're going, you know, with the program. You know, our art statement, our mission statement is jobs for America's graduates, empowering our South Putnam Eagles with the skills to succeed in education, employment, and life. So it's a life skills course. People always ask me, what do you teach? And I said, it's a life skills course. That's the bottom line. We can go to the next slide. This is kind of just a brief overview of a few of the things that we try to do. We start the year with vision boards and goal writing. You don't know where you need to be if you don't have goals, so we make that a big part. We talk a lot about mental health, different mindsets that make up who we are and how we go about things. We do a lot of project-based learning with creative decision-making and things of that ilk. Public speaking is a big part and make the kids get up and, you know, 17, 16, 17, 18-year-old kids don't like to get up and talk in front of people a lot. So get them more comfortable with presenting what they're doing, being proud of what they're doing. The how to write a business plan, that's actually, we're in the depths of a session right now where each student has to write a business plan on something that they're really passionate about that they could possibly take into the world after they graduate. And so we're really excited about that. We try to bring in a lot of guest speakers, brought in people from various colleges and universities, branches of the military, different trades, trying to make sure they're aware of all the options that are out there for them after they leave South Putnam. We do a lot with finance in there, personal budgets. One of my favorites was budgeting for baby. I think this scared every kid in there from ever having a baby on how much it costs to actually care for one and pay for it. So it was actually a cross of budgeting and sexual education. So we get into taxes, we talk about credit cards. You know, when they walk out, walk onto either a college campus or out into the world, you know, the 18, 19, 20, 1-year-olds are the biggest target of credit card companies. We talked, we went through a very in-depth session on how you can get hooked, hook, line, and sinker. And you think, I've got this little $500 credit card. My friends are over and Friday night and I'm just gonna buy pizza for everybody. And then that pizza ends up costing you about, you know, that $100 worth of pizza. Once you pay all the interest and you make minimum payments, you end up paying about $300 for that pizza. So they got the point. We work on, we're working on some FAFSA stuff, resume writing. They are all engaged in Indiana Career Connect and Indiana Career Explorer. They all have profiles on both of those platforms. So as they, they have a resume posted on Indiana Career Connect and Indiana Career Explorer. They learn how to use Indiana Career Explorer to go look for jobs and in their fields of interest. We had a couple of different opportunities to take the kids away to Vincennes and to Ivy Tech. All the JAG students went on those trips. Go on to the next one. The last thing here I'll talk about and then I'll get out of your hair, but the Career Development Conference, this is a huge deal. And I didn't even realize how big of a deal it was until I got my kids there, our kids there. It's an event that took place in Terre Haute back in December. During the fall semester, each student had to do a project, one of these projects, whether it was a chapter project, a team project, or an individual project. And they were submitted to our region, which encompasses 13 different high schools in the area. If they qualified, they got to go to Terre Haute in their event and participate. We had quite a few young folks qualify and participate in areas of business plan. Creative decision-making is a fun one. They don't know what the problem is. They walk into a room, they have a team of three people. They walk into a room, they're given a real-world problem, and they're given an hour to write and put together a presentation on how they're going, they would solve that problem, that real-world problem. So that's a fun one. Business plan, we had a group present, you know, put together and present a business plan. We had one of them do career preparation. He impressed the judges so much, I don't know how he didn't place, because he impressed the judges so much that one of the chancellors from Vincennes wanted to invite him down personally on a visit back to see Vincennes because he really wants that kid to go to Vincennes and be a part of their program down there. He wants to be an engineer. So Emily Mudrack was our one person, she was our one student that did place when we went. She created a logo, a region logo, that finished third in the contest. And the last slide is just the group that did go and participate. Emily is the one in the middle, in the tan, next to Claire in the pink. She's the one that placed, but these were the individuals that qualified and got to go to Terre Haute. And we're hoping that, I'm hoping that we have two or at least twice as much, if not 20 to 30 kids qualify for this next year. Just having a better apt, you know, idea of what it takes to participate in this. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, so JAG, is your program an elective or are you select students?
Well, yes, they have to actually be accepted into JAG. Brian has been instrumental in identifying students that fit the criteria. Some JAG programs in the past have gotten off on the wrong foot and they thought it was like a place to put almost credit remediation type of environment. That's not what it is. JAG wants about 25% of the kids to be in the top 25% of the class, of the junior, senior class. 25 or 50% from the middle and about 25% from maybe the bottom of the class. It brings a better mix of kids for doing projects and bouncing things off. And it can help some kids raise up their bar that are on the bottom and it can help some of those kids who are in the top with leadership skills as they step forward.
So is it a year-long class?
It's a year-long, it's a year-long class. They can take it both junior and, they can elect to take it both junior and senior year if it fits into their schedule, but they don't have to take it both.
So it's just for juniors and seniors?
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you for your time.
A financial update.
Yeah, in your board packets, you have the latest financials through the end of the month of January of 2025. That included all of our claim documents, all of our payrolls, our cash flows, all the transfers, and the fund reports as well. As reflected in those reports, we do continue to perform as we forecasted regarding all the income, expenses, and fund balances.
Legislative update, please.
Probably no. Monday marked the deadline for bills to make it out of their Indiana House or Senate committees. Some of the prominent bills dealing with education topics are still moving through the. Senate Bill 518, sharing a property tax dollars with charter schools, which doesn't directly impact our area at the moment. Senate Bill 523 with chaplains in public schools. Senate Bill 287, lots of talk there, partisan school board elections again, which is also an ISBA called Action Alert Bill. Look on the lookout for those emails on bills that ISBA opposes. And probably the most talked about from what I've been reading is Senate Bill 1. I know last Tuesday, Senate Republicans backed away from the most significant parts of Governor Braun's property tax cut proposal. Their version of relief includes tightening requirements for schools to advance certain referendums and limiting how much property tax levies can grow. Bear with me on the relevance of this next one, but the House Bill 1472, the annexation of residential development with the town of Plainfield. Talking about annexing the land around Deer Creek. I don't know if you've read, have gone much of that, but golf courses that could be developed by the hanky development, like million-dollar homes and projecting it could bring close to the thousands of students to surround these schools, Deer Creek in particular. The big controversy right now is because of the possibility of it going into a TIP district, which is a neutral that uses taxes on the future gains in real estate. You'd value within the TIP to pay for infrastructure improvements, which would prevent any tax dollars going to that school corporation until it's sunset. They didn't even say when that would be, maybe 10 or 15 years. If something like that happens, I know that Deer Creek tax rate would go up 124.5% is what they were saying if their board needed to cover. And that would be roughly a, if a new high school, if you're getting double the population, roughly 100 million, probably, it's a ballpark figure for a new high school now. So I know that doesn't affect South Putnam, but that many new students residing 20 miles from here with open enrollments, I mean, it's certainly gonna have some effect on the population, some way, shape, or form, I would think. It's nice to know too that certain bills like that does have the ISBA back. I mean, last week, the board made their support, so it's kind of nice to hear what's happening in that.
Did you have something to add?
Obviously, we're monitoring all of these things as well. All the associations are monitoring them. I get daily updates from all kinds of sources. Superintendent's Association is definitely monitoring that. I get all the ISBA things as well, but I also get the Indiana Small and Rural Schools updates, which is very important to us because we are small and rural. So I've been going to several events related to legislation. I went to last week, I think last Wednesday, right after the Senate had reduced what Governor Braun's plan was as far as the impact to schools on the tax levies. And I met with several legislators, it was a legislative breakfast. So I was in downtown Indianapolis at 7:00 a.m. last Wednesday, meeting with several legislators and several other superintendents from our county were there just stating our causes, which is great. And that was hosted by the Small and Rural Schools Association. And then last Saturday, I was at Farm Bureau in Greencastle. So several of the other superintendents were with me there as well, just stating our cases for our schools and the impact that these laws will have on it. But we're monitoring it and good news is with Dr. Penrod's help, we've been able to make sure we budgeted for worst-case scenarios and everything that we've been doing. So that's credit, you know, to what we're looking at prior to this when we put the budget together last year.
And also, you told me that March 15 at Farm Bureau at 9 o'clock is the next, I don't know.
Slave session, yes. So our local state reps and our local.
Yeah, so it's always, I don't know, was it?
Very informative.
Was it packed when you were there?
It was very full.
Small room, yeah. But it's a good thing to go to. I missed that one, but I'm going. So, thank you. Project update, Beth Rainbow from MKS. Always good to hear from you.
Thank you. It's still pretty quiet out at the field house. I'll just touch on some of the projects that we completed here. The roofs, the roof projects are completely closed out. The field obviously is mostly closed out. We have some opportunities for some extra work to be installed that's still getting bid. It's just a gravel stop on the visitor's side, having some trouble getting that bid out. But I have some leads going on, ongoing. And the PA system, the contractor was out last week. Took a couple of, an amplifier back to his shop, had to do some, a little bit of work on the system. He's gonna be back Monday to button it up. And then Danny Howie's gonna come do a walkthrough and we'll start, do a complete turnover package on that. That should be out of our hair shortly. And the pool, we're set to start construction on that spring break. So there's gonna be some noise going on there when everybody's gone. So that, all the submittals and our advisors are in for that.
What's the timeline on the pool?
It'll be, it's not, we're gonna get going on it at spring break. And it should go, I think it's three weeks, four weeks after that. And it's sectioned real nice in the schedule, not gonna bump into anything. So it's, we're waiting for everything to wind down now and then jump into it. We'll have to move some of the construction barriers and whatnot, wall, things are still going on. We're gonna do the shoring for the roof, the wall above it. But that's a day and it's gonna be coordinated through, you know, just through the teams and everything. It shouldn't be much more than just a little bit of a headache for a minute. Then on to the field house. I was hoping, I'd had some, a lot of noise going on right now, but that was pushed till next week. Starting Monday, we'll be digging puddings, there's gonna be concrete trucks here. We had a meeting the other day on Friday that we brought in the concrete contractor and just wanted to talk about more about pickup, drop-off, things like that now. Just to coordinate, just to coordinate everything to make, like I said, no headaches. So everybody's excited to start pouring and then we'll start setting block. We have a block meeting this, tomorrow actually, where the block contractors are gonna come in. We'll explain the same things, just basically bringing the inspectors in to inspect the, get the number and whatnot. And just keep everything moving forward. Any questions? IMI's delivering the concrete, delivering the concrete.
Why not local?
That was Peterson's choice.
I can answer that if you want me to do. Peterson Company is out of Brazil, who works with IMI out of Brazil. That's their main, that's their contractor down there.
I understand.
They tried, cash concrete didn't outbid it. They did get a chance, they just couldn't outbid it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Okay, have a comment? New business, consideration of 2025-26 preschool fees, Mrs. Gibbity.
Hey, everybody. So as you know, we started this school year, well, we ended last school year with a developmental preschool class. And we didn't have community preschool. And so at the beginning of this year, based on a grant that we received from the state of Indiana, we opened our first preschool classroom for community preschool. And it was a program that not only provided academics, but also childcare. And so we have an extended day for our preschoolers in that community preschool room. And that room filled up pretty quickly and we had a waiting list. And so because of that waiting list and because our staff has been so wonderful and flexible and able to help support the preschool, we were able to quickly open a second preschool room. I believe we opened that in September, October. And that room is almost full with 20 students. So we have about 40 preschoolers now in our building. Well, more than that, if you include our developmental preschool students, we probably have about 48 preschoolers in our building. And so that being said, that grant that helped us open this preschool this year is no longer going to be around for next year. So we've looked at different funding sources on how we can maintain this preschool classroom. And so we looked at, through family and social services, we have the option to apply for On My Way Pre-K vouchers. And the On My Way Pre-K vouchers would pay the student tuition. Students can still attend all day, all day preschool. And those vouchers are for students who are kindergarten, they're kindergarten-bound for the next year. And so that being said, in order to qualify for the vouchers, we have to do something behind the scenes and we're working on that. But we also will need to charge our families for preschool next year. And we will charge $300 a month for students who are kindergarten-bound. They can attend Monday through Friday if they are in our kindergarten-bound classroom. So that will be one classroom. And we would like for them to attend Monday through Friday to get them ready. And that preschool will begin at, they can drop off at 7:40 a.m. and then probably end around 2:45 or 2:35 in the afternoon. We'll have a second preschool room. This preschool room is for our younger students who are three and four, not necessarily kindergarten-bound. The parents of these students in this classroom have two options that they can choose from. So they can choose from Monday through Friday, which is all school day, $300 a month, or Monday, Wednesday, and Friday for $180 a month, which is about $15 a day for three days a week at four weeks a month. But our three and four-year-old room can qualify for CCDF vouchers. And that would pay their, if they apply and qualify, that would pay their tuition.
What's the, would you say CCDF?
CCDF, and that stands for Child Care and Development Fund. I don't know the answer to that, but it is through families and social services. And it's the same organization that provides On My Way Pre-K.
Oh, it's different.
Yeah, and the CCDF funding, there is a waiting list. So it's a little bit harder to get those funds because you do need to apply and then be on the waiting list. The On My Way Pre-K funds, which are for kindergarten-bound students, they don't have a waiting list, but they have a window of when you can apply. And that window, I think it opens, I think it opens in April. But we are working closely with our people from social services and they are helping to give us the timeline to keep us on track with all of that.
Does that mean there's a limited number of vouchers that they will give out?
For the On My Way Pre-K.
Yeah.
For On My Way Pre-K, it is my understanding that as long as you apply within the window, if you qualify based on your income, you can receive those vouchers. And I have not been told that there is a limit to those vouchers. There are just some criteria around it because they do have to be kindergarten-bound students. Do you guys have any questions?
So I know right now some of the kiddos go to the after-school program, right? So will that, will they take preschoolers next year too? Because didn't they kind of work that out as a special deal?
Yeah, they take them this year. They started taking them this year. And that program has been so successful with preschool and they do allow students grades K through five to attend, that we are getting ready to open the before-school care. So that way, we'll have the option for the before-school care, which will start at 6:30 a.m. And that's offered through Ivy League Kids. And so it will have before and after-school care, which goes until 6:00.
So, and they'll continue that next year?
Yes, they will continue that, yeah.
Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for us? We've made the motion to approve the 2025 preschool fees. Lee seconded that. All those in favor? Consideration of Central Elementary Chiller, Dr. Smith.
As part of our ongoing deferred maintenance catch-up plan, one of the items that is at the end of life is the chiller at Central Elementary. Therefore, Jared Hudson, our Director of Maintenance, he solicited vendors for quotes and those are in your board packets. And once you approve this tonight, we will consider those quotes. Because of the nature of this, it's very time-sensitive because of all the pieces and parts that have to be ordered so that we can get that in, so that we're all up and running for the hot season. So that's why we're bringing that to you here in February.
Jared, I would appreciate if you would just kind of go over these two quotes that we have and give us your pluses and minuses or?
Well, I think there were, they're about $1,700 apart, I think, which was for a $300,000-plus project. That was really close.
Can't get closer.
No, not really. And I didn't, we didn't solicitate one or the other. I mean, I received them both within 24 hours of each other and boom. So they're exactly the same equipment, same warranty. And it is noted on there that there is a $10,000 rebate from Hendricks County, REMC, also on top of that.
Okay, that is only on the tiny ones.
It's on both, the other one just didn't note it. It's the same exact equipment, yeah. Other than that, they're equal. I mean, doesn't really matter one way or the other, both contractors do work here, I respect them both. So it really doesn't make a difference, I guess.
I mean, ultimately, we're just approving.
We're just approving the project and we're gonna, yeah.
Yeah.
See what's gonna be the best, what's gonna be the best fit of everything that we've done with the system that's there.
We'll get Brandon involved as well with this and sit down with him and his recommendations as well.
Okay.
The current chiller that's in there is 26 years old. The lifespan on them is about 15 years old, so we've gotten our use out of it. So, and it's on its last leg. I mean, we're, it's any day. I mean, it's gonna, we're lucky if it fires up this spring, honestly. So, and I think it's noted on there, I think there's about a 26-week lead time. If we order it now, it's 26 weeks before we can get it, yeah. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so we're just approving three places.
Yep, they can decide.
If there's no other discussion, I move to approve the central chiller.
Joe made the motion to approve the purchase of the Central Elementary Chiller. Seconded that. All those in favor? Consideration of update to Administrator 401A plan.
Yep, as part of our documentation alignment process that we're going through, as we're getting through all the different documentation, the updated language found in your board packets is needed to align with the MetLife plan, which is already in place. So before this, there wasn't any administrator language that reflected the plan documents. It was just teacher language. So this thanks very much to Gretchen Wall.
So just thanks very much to Gretchen Wallace for finding this discrepancy and bringing it to our attention so we can get that corrected.
I have to do it. Yeah, yeah. I move to approve the Administrator 401A plan update.
I'll second.
We made the motion to approve the Administrator 401A plan update, seconded that. All those in favor?
And Dr. Penrod, I think we're done with our regular business meeting, so we'll give you the rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. So as part of our strategic plan, we have again made culture one of our four major pillars. As part of that, I have monthly meetings with Classroom Teachers Association when there's something to discuss. And I have periodic meetings with teachers and staff during their prep periods. I'm currently in my next round of those prep period meetings. They began last week, did all of middle school, high school and half of Central Elementary last week. I'll finish up with the last half of teachers at Central Elementary tomorrow morning. And then I'll be at Fillmore all day on Friday. I greatly enjoy all these meetings with our teachers and the instructional assistants too, that can stop in during some of their time. And during that time, basically I just review our strategic plan, their role in all of that and then give them updates on what's happening across the district, just so they kind of get it from the horse's mouth, so to speak. I also then take time at the end of that and then again, question and answer time for the, the teachers and staff that are present to basically look at their needs, some of the celebrations that they have going on and their concerns that they may have, so that we can address them. So we'll continue to do that as well. My goal is to do that at least once a semester, just to get out there and talk directly to staff. So that's one thing. I just wanted to let you know that was going on. Second thing is another pillar in our strategic plan is branding our district. And we've done a very good job of this, but this year we're taking things to a whole new level. Because we've met all the previous schools, so it's time to step it up. Therefore, rather than me talking about it, I'm just going to show you a sample of the next wave of some of the videos that we've done and will continue to do, that will be hitting our website and social media channels soon. So just want to share a sample of that with you.
Before you start that video, did you share any of the needs that teachers have had? Or is it anything major?
Actually, it's been absolutely amazing. Our culture is amazing at South Putnam and I tell them that every time I meet. Haven't been anything major things that have come to fruition. An example was hand dryers in our restaurants here. So we're, that's the type of thing. So it's not, you know, nothing huge, major type things, just small little things that'll just make our environment better. So, and that's, that's typically what I get in all of these.
Hand dryers are not amazing.
And I understand it. And like I said, I hear them and we'll see what we can do about it. So that, that type of thing, it's, it's great. We're getting a lot of good feedback and things that we can tweak as we continue to, to progress in our goals. Yep. Here we go. Oh, there should have been sound. Just one moment. We'll just take the camera out, try that again.
It's always a great day to be an Eagle at South Putnam. Our school is thriving with growth and innovation, honoring our rich tradition while embracing the future. At South Putnam, we are developing creative, critical thinkers who exemplify courage, accomplishment and virtue through life. Guided by our core values.
Respect, kindness, leadership, excellence, hard work, and lifelong learning.
Our school community of multi-generational family and welcome newcomers come together to create new and learning experiences and strong community ties. Here, students and staff feel they are in the right place, surrounded by the right people at the right time. Community involvement is at the heart of South Putnam. We foster connections that create a true sense of belonging, whether through organizing community gatherings or mentoring programs. Our Eagles lead by example, building connections that extend beyond school walls. Here, we're not just achieving educational goals, we're fostering a sense of belonging and pride, creating a supportive community that feels like home.
I will, that's all my report for the evening.
Right. If there's not anything else, go ahead.